Call the regular meeting of the zoning commission to order for March, what is it? No, May the 3rd. I'm just looking at the minutes of the 19th. First order of business is to appoint alternates if we need it, and I think we need two. Correct? So Diane, why don't you serve for Ann? And Shannon, you can serve for Donna.
Okay.
And that gives us our six.
Okay.
Minutes of April. How was it?
It's confusing because the first one has the January 8th date on.
Yeah, I have January 8th date, but that, those are the minutes from the April 5th meeting, right?
That's right.
Right. So that's the first thing to correct.
Right.
The date and the minutes of April 5th. And there is a misspelling of Chip Houlihan's last name. I didn't see anything else. Anybody seen anything else on that?
I got, I got something very small on line number 74. Just about, just past the right of the middle of the line, it says opposition stating on the change. The word on isn't necessary, that just needs to be stricken. So it reads opposition stating the change would alter.
You got anything else?
Um, go ahead, Bruce.
I was gonna say the last line on page two. It's 102. It gets into a special meeting will be scheduled for May 4th. I'm not sure these dates seem confused to me. I don't know that we're ever considering having a meeting on May, on May 4th.
Right.
I'm not sure about the 21st, but.
Those are April 21st and the 10th of May, if I remember right. Good catch. Kevin?
I'll go with that, to, to the May 10th.
Yeah, and then line 57, there's an I in potential, should be an I in potential. Somerset's line 71, Somerset spelled, there's only one M in there. Somerset's wrong somehow. It's summer, that's why, it's supposed to be spelled like summer, not sour.
What is that?
Uh, 71.
Oh, right.
No, it's, it's, that's correct, it's not the season summer. If Somerset, it's named after a town in England or something.
I thought it was, well, I thought we had winter set and summer set.
Oh.
It's one M and an O. The one O and one M.
Is it, that, I know it was, it was wrong, but I didn't know what, okay.
The M is extra, next double M.
Okay.
And Houlihan is misspelled, so we got that. Anything else? And motion to approve the minutes of April 5th.
So the corrections.
That's corrected.
Yes.
Go ahead, Bruce.
I, with the minute, the, the minute says corrected, I'm, I motion that we approve them. Let me state that differently, I'm, I, I motion that we approve the minutes of April 5th with the changes that we just articulated.
Second it.
Second by Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed, none, abstained, none, okay, that passes. Six, nothing. Okay, the next minutes, we have a little, a few more things, okay. Minutes of April 19th. Donna Beinstein's name is misspelled.
I, I don't think we got those, did we?
They're just put up, I think.
Yeah, it's got directly.
I'm sorry, I, I noticed the mistake, it wasn't uploaded, so that, that's on me. I, I uploaded it before the meeting. You could maybe to, in fairness, the other members table action on that. Oh, I was wondering if there was something wrong with me, because I couldn't, I didn't find this earlier. 10 minutes ago, I, I saw it there and I haven't really thoroughly read it.
Let's table it, because the, there's one that the, the vote on the zone change is backwards. Among other things. Which, anyway, so let's table the, the motion or the minutes of April 19th till the next time. Okay. Next order of business is application 2106. David Burr and David Richman for site plan approval for the storage facility at 34 Hot Metal Street. Okay, we had, Mike, do you have anything? We, we had a long memo from Jeff, town engineer, on, on this application. Do you have any comments on that? I thought there were a couple of places where he found that what I thought were design errors in the, in the documentation.
Actually, maybe Dave Ziyex, Ziyex from the, the, the design team could speak to it. They've addressed some of their issues, the issues brought up by Jeff. And I'll, I'll, maybe I'll let the applicant speak to it, because Jeff also in his memo said, if you can act on it favorably, condition some things, I don't know, Jeff is on the line with us tonight, but I think he's, he's in two meetings at the same time, if he has chance to speak. If we have any specific questions on some of the comments that he made.
Okay.
But may, maybe have Dave Ziyex start the, start the conversation and we can go from there.
Okay, Dave.
Yes, good, uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Dave Ziyex, I'm a professional engineer with F.A. Heska Associates, we're located next door in East Granby. And with regards to the engineering comments that came out earlier, we have responded in writing to each one of those comments. And this morning, we actually conducted the testing on the site that Jeff Shea requested. And we reported that to the staff this afternoon, that testing went well. So we both believe that the design is, is good the way it is, will require any revisions. And I think we're ready to move forward. The comments that they had were typical engineering kind of comments, and we responded to everyone in writing. Back, made some, made some minor modifications to the plans that staff has, but doesn't affect the overall design of the project.
Okay, Jeff, are you there? He's not answering. Any other commissioners have questions?
Just an observation that when I read the, the messaging from the engineers of this morning or today, it seemed to me they were disputing some of the points that Jeff made. And not being an engineer and still feeling like we, we need to be very careful of this, taking somebody's word for what Jeff thinks and not getting it in writing. There's an elaborate writing that Jeff came up with, there's an elaborate response. I think that we should get something very definitive from Jeff and not just the suggestion that it's okay or go ahead or whatever. I'm, I'm interested in hearing from Jeff.
Okay.
Whether in writing, I, I guess I won't be, I'm not a stickler on that, but you know, if it's not in writing, it's gotta be from his mouth.
Okay, anybody else have comments? I agree with you, by the way, Bruce.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I might suggest that why don't we proceed with our presentation? Because there's lots of other issues regarding the zoning commission with the application that don't have anything to do with drainage design. And maybe Jeff will join us from his other meeting that he's, he did tell me earlier today that he was going to be at a meeting at probably around seven o'clock and then hope to join the commission after that, because the town has an application after us regarding the town hall. And if he joins us, then we can hear what he has to say. But maybe.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Mike, or, excuse me, Mike, would you like me to speak on that on behalf of Jeff?
Dan, you, actually, Dan, you want to introduce yourself to commission first? Yes.
Sure, yeah, I'm the project engineer in the engineering department. I work very closely with Jeff on a daily basis and worked with him to review this project. And based on the information that Dave and his company provided us today with this one test, we feel pretty comfortable that with the comments that, with the condition that they make those minor revisions, nothing that'll change the project as a whole, like he said, that we feel comfortable having it approved conditionally tonight.
Which conditions are you talking about?
Um, very minor, just, I don't, I don't have the notes up with me, just minor changes to the details. Again, I, I don't have, I don't have all them up with me.
Okay.
But they did, they did resolve most of the issues.
Okay, well, I, I think we should go ahead and proceed and wait for Jeff. Okay?
Michael, could you allow me to share?
Dave, you should have the ability.
Okay, good. Yep, it came up. So I have a, I have a little PowerPoint presentation of the drawings that are before you this evening, just to help out with the visuals. And maybe what we could do is we could start out with the applicant, just wanted to have a, say a few words regarding the project, why they think it's good at the location we're proposing, and then just about the two applicants themselves. Dave, did you want to take over?
David Richman, why don't you go first?
Good evening, I'm David Richman. Been a full-time resident of Simsbury for over 25 years. And this will be my third self-storage facility. We had built the one on West Street in 2009. And then I purchased a very large facility in 2011. Both of those had been transferred based on a sale. My office is located in the center of town. I'm a chairperson, you can read, I'm on the chamber, very active, and I'm a board member of Save Nod Road. And David and I began discussing this opportunity about a year and a half ago. And through the discussions with the experts in the industry, meeting with Mark Greenberg, the owner of the land, doing a feasibility test study, which our bank required, which was completed last week, we feel very confident that this will be an excellent, excellent facility for the area, which is underserved right now based on the amount of new construction of apartments and homes in the area. And it sits on the Avon-Simsbury line, which is even better for us versus the center of Simsbury. Want to go ahead, Dave?
Sure, my name's David Burr, I'm the president of DW Burr Landscaping here in town. My building is on West Street in behind the Salters Bus Company. My family and I have been in town for over 30 years. All three of my sons attended Simsbury schools and went on to be successful, thank goodness. We've been in business for about 37 years, doing what we do. And this would be my second self-storage project, the first one being the one adjacent to my property on West Street. One of the things that the feasibility study that we had done said is that not only is there a need for this, but currently the facilities that we do have are basically at near 100% capacity. And because we're on the south end of town, we will tap into some of the Avon market, and in that case, there's only one facility in that town. So the need is definitely there per our feasibility study.
Okay, going back to the, the plan set. As you can see, this is the, the survey map, and I'll start at my little pointer here. The parcel that the facility would be located on is actually called adjusted parcel number two, which is this rather strange shaped parcel here. This is part of the overall master plan, PAD site, that includes the Aspen Green Apartments, which are located on the southerly parcel here. Then there's the two undeveloped parcels up along Hot Metal Street. Then there's the Curaleaf facility, which is the reconstructed CL&amp;P facility located right here. And then down here in the northeasterly corner of the property is where the storage facility would go. Looking at the property outlined on a recent aerial photo, you can see it's an undeveloped former farm field. This is the driveway here to the north that goes from Route 10 back to the Chubb Insurance Facility and the Tower Park, Tower Business Park. That's a private driveway located there, Old Metal Plain Road is across the street. So the, the site plan is highlighted in white where it would be located here. To the east of the site is the bicycle path that runs north-south. And as you can see, that's area is well-screened with trees. And you can actually barely see the Chubb driveway here hiding underneath the canopy trees that were planted when that was constructed. This is a colored rendering of the actual site plan. We're looking at a total of 55,000 square feet. They're all one-story buildings. There'll be six buildings, so you'll have these four long linear buildings that'll have units on both sides. And then these two larger buildings on the south end where you have entry doors, and these units are mostly all inside and temperature control and things of that nature. So the overall site is 17.7 acres, and this area here is about five acres that will be developed. There'll be a single driveway access, which will be a private driveway constructed to connect into the Chubb driveway. And then that will come out at Route 10, at the intersection that you see out there now. The site easily meets the design criteria that was established when the PAD master plan was approved with regard to coverage, building height, things of that nature. The zoning regulations really don't have a specific parking requirement for this type of facility, but we are providing five parking spaces here. The actual office, when you enter the site, come into the site, there will be an office located at the end of this first building. And we'll have five parking spaces constructed there with an ADA space for customers and patrons to park there, they have to go into the office. The site will be entirely fenced in with the security gates. We've set it 40 feet off this easterly property line along with the bike path to preserve the vegetation along that common property line. And as you can see, this circulation pattern is around the buildings. If you're familiar with these types of self-service facilities, you can enter in with your vehicle around the site. There's paved driveways between the buildings and the units in all directions. And we have left ample room around the site to navigate it with fairly decent sized trucks. And more importantly, the town fire engine equipment, so that they can enter the site and drive around without, you know, hitting any of the buildings or hitting any of the fencing. What we're going to be constructing is a large landscape berm that will run the entire length of the facility, north to south. Basically, all the top soil that will be generated with the clearing of the site to construct it, we will build a large berm and landscape it quite extensively, so that you'll have a good buffer visibility as you travel down Hot Metal Street. This berm will do a good job in blocking any views of this facility from that location. Coming down the main driveway, Chubb driveway, there's a double row of beautiful canopy trees that were planted, you know, back 30 years ago when the, when the driveway was constructed. And then we have a good vegetation, a natural vegetation row between our facility and the bike path. And then there is actually a pretty decent vegetation between this facility and the Curaleaf facility as well. The site lighting on the facility will be the minimum needed for security. We have perimeter lighting around the outside shining down in, into the site. We have those on 17-foot high poles. And there'll be full cutoff to eliminate any light trespass, you know, off, outside the fencing. And then there'll be some small, wall-mounted lighting here at the office and then at the doorways for security purposes on the site. Utilities will be all underground, we'll be bringing in electric and telephone from Route 10. We'll be connecting into the town sanitary sewer. And we've been in discussions with Aquarium Water, we're going to bring in water service for the office and for landscaping, watering purposes. And a, we're going to bring in a new line for a, an onsite hydrant, fire hydrant for the fire department that'll be located right here in the middle of the site up in front. The drainage system is designed to meet the town's stormwater management standards. We basically are taking advantage of the sandy soils that this site will sit on. This entire area between Route 10 and the bike path, starting way back with the Aspen Apartments and proceeding north and pretty much all the sites all the way up, is all very sandy soils. And we'll be utilizing that to use infiltration. So essentially, we will have no, no discharge from this site for all the design storms. We'll be constructing a, a water quality infiltration basin located right here on the north side of the parking lot. And then we have infiltrator systems spread out in the site to, to take the roof runoff from these buildings and put them into infiltration systems. So again, we'll essentially have no direct flow off this site for storms all the way up to the 100-year event. And, you know, the rest of these plans are the typical plans you see in our plan set are grading plans, very extensive grading plans, erosion control plans, utility plans. You know, all of the requirements of the town's site plan application process. What we have is for traffic, we would expect the traffic from this facility to be very minimal all day long. People come and go from their units to, you know, visit their units, you know, place merchant, place their personal belongings and remove their personal belongings. But these facilities typically generate very little traffic and really no peak hours during the course of, you know, the, the overall week. So with the one single driveway going out to Route 10, we don't expect to see any traffic impacts at all to the traffic on Route 10. Looking at the architecture of the building. Bear with me a second here, I just have to work our way through a couple of sheets here. Just waiting for Zoom to catch up here. This is an exterior elevation of the small office that would be located at that end of the first building. And this is a little bit of a colored rendering of what that would look, we have glass in the front, glaze in the front, and the main entrance door with some small planting beds in front. The interior of the office, basically the customer doorway located in the front. There'll be a lounge area while you're waiting for service. There'll be a reception area, there'll be a public bathroom located in this building. That'll be connected to the town sewer system, and then just some small management office space in that building. Looking at a little bit of a perspective of the units, you can see the four linear buildings that would be in the front and the larger buildings in the back. Then we have the, the office building right located up here in the front. And that's pretty much it on the architecture, it's pretty simple. Light colors. And then, of course, the landscaping berms and the natural landscaping around the side will do a good job in buffering that from the, the public. We talked a little bit about the engineering comments. Again, I believe they've been, all been adequately addressed. But certainly we would, you know, leave them as, leave them as conditions of site plan approval. We'll work that out with the engineering department. And then you have a planner's report that I'm sure you've all received, prepared by Michael. And it has really no comments to address from my perspective. He does list the recommended conditions, you know, on the last page of his report. So at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
First question I have is that you mentioned Aquarium. And I thought I saw somewhere in the engineer's report that, that this is Avon Water Company, is that correct? Which is right?
Um, well, it, it's, Avon Water Company is now part of Connecticut Water. They were bought by Connecticut Water. And I have confirmed with both Connecticut Water and Aquarium that it is served by Aquarium. Connecticut Water stops just a little bit south of here.
Well, let me offer some more perspective on that, because I know Avon Water supplies the homes at the lower two-thirds of Lincoln Lane, which is right across the way. I, I believe Avon Water is also doing the condominiums, but if, you know, if, I'm, I'm sure that Aquarium and, I mean, they, they have to know what their, where their water line stops. And if their water line comes down to where you are, it's my understanding from the former president of Avon Water Company that they brought the Avon Water Company up in the 1950s to service the Nike site. It was so far for the Simsbury Water Company to, Village Water Company to come, that it was an easy decision. So that's why Avon Water Company is in the south end of Simsbury. And I, I believe that Connecticut Water's been bought out by San Jose Water Company too.
Well, I know Aquarium, Aquarium is, is owned by Eversource now, so.
No, really?
Yeah. But Aquarium was very happy to send me the application and the fee schedule for hooking us up, so they, they're, they're ready.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's, that's not a difficult thing. Other commissioners have questions of the applicant?
Yeah, I'll go. Okay, so on this site plan, you have the four straight buildings, the linear buildings, and then the two at the south end that are a little bit bigger. And so it doesn't match up with the renderings, which are three and four, I think. So with the, the southern buildings, because you're covering more, I'm just wondering on the heights on those, on the, on the southern buildings, since it will have to be higher, since it's got to cover a little more space.
Same height.
The same height?
I think, i- if they're higher, it's by a couple of feet only, because these are relatively flat pitched roofs. See, this, this, this site plan that I have shown here now, the layout plan, this, this actually is almost like an internal picture of these larger buildings. These buildings are this rectangular shape, it's a single building, and they're crowned in the center. So the pitch on that, on these buildings is relatively flat. The, the actual walls of, of the buildings are the same height, both in these long linear storage units and this building, it's just the pitch on the roof. So if, if it's taller at the center of the building, it's by a couple of feet.
Yeah, I would assume it had to be taller in order to.
Yeah, even if it's like, you know, like a one-on-four pitch or something like that, it'd be a couple of more feet in the center of the ridge of this building, but the walls are the same height.
Yeah, that makes sense. But, so I was just going for the height of the berm and the height of the roof.
The berm is at least six feet tall, which is located in here from the, from the grades. And then we've got it planted with evergreen trees and, you know, canopy trees and that, and the like that will, that will take off. These, let's go to the grading plan here.
Yeah, well, yeah, it'd be really interesting in the peak of the southern.
Yeah. Let's see here. So this build, these buildings here, the first floor is 198.7. And then the.
That's to the floor.
That's to the floor's floor, yes. And so we're probably looking at. We're probably looking at, let's see. Probably about two seventeen or two eighteen to the to the the top of the peak of the roof. And then the berms are this one, this berm here at this elevation is around nominally around two oh four. And this one's about two, it's about two oh four. It's about nominally about two oh four, two oh five to the top of the berm.
I think the drawings that we had said two oh one point five where your cursor is right now. But anyway, I was interested in the same thing. Kevin's after. How much is the difference?
Yeah, down in this area here. It's, yeah, it's two oh one here and two oh three and a half here. Two oh three and a half at the top of this portion of the berm. Two oh one and a half at the top of this portion portion of the berm.
Okay, so we're saying that the southern end where it's two oh three, it'd be fifteen inches of roof above just the dirt burn, not counting the plantation, the plant.
Right, yes.
I just wonder how much would be a floating roof, you know, when you're looking at it.
No, wait a minute, Kevin. It's, I think. The speaker said that peak was something like two seventeen. The berm's two oh one.
Two, yeah, two eighteen, so.
Looking at seventeen feet difference, give or take. From the top of the berm to the top of the roof, it's seventeen feet.
Oh, seventeen feet.
So there are plantings, but I thought there were gaps in the plantings. I'm not sure how that seventeen feet is going to be covered. You know, the introduction referred to the visual being. You know, managed by the berm, but I'm not sure that. I'm seeing that.
I think I think the berm, I mean, it's going to buffer all of the activities down on the ground. So any of the fencing, the doors that you'll see people coming and going out of the buildings, that's really. You know, what you're what you'd see, the roof is going to be. The roof is the buildings are parallel to Route ten, so you're going to see some of the roofs pointing up outside the berm. I mean, you're not going to build a berm seventeen feet tall.
Maybe you could talk about the plantings on the top of the berm and what's what's called for and the spacing between them and how quickly they're going to grow and. And get some more height on top of that two oh one.
You just just bear with me, folks, just for a second. I'm only responding to how fast Zoom will allow me to move sheet to sheet.
Where is full screening required in any of our regulations for this type of project on a PAD?
If if I could please speak for just a moment, this is David Burr, landscape contractor. I just wanted to speak to the plantings on the berm. The trees are going in at a three to three and a half inch caliper, which is a fairly mature tree. Those are the deciduous trees. There's four different varieties of those. And then there are also some flowering trees that are going in. And then there are several different varieties of evergreen trees that are going in at a six to seven foot height. So they're not huge, but they're not, you know, they're by no means small plants. And you do have to allow room for these plants to mature. Otherwise, you just create something that in very little time becomes overgrown and unattractive. So the idea here is to plant these things spaced appropriately so that as they mature. It'll be a complete, you know, blockage of the facility. That will, however, last over the time so that it doesn't become overplanted.
Yeah, and David, the the intent here is to offer a mix of of all types of shrubs and trees. To add some diversity on this berm. And, you know, it's always good from a health perspective with landscaping is to have a. A good diverse mix of materials there so that. They age well and are resistant to disease and things of that nature. But there's a fairly good size number of evergreen trees mixed in with. You know, full size canopy trees as well. So I think you're going to see that this this is a very large berm. You know, it runs the length of the entire project. And, you know, it's it's five to six feet tall off a flat field. But it is a large mass berm. It's, you know, it has very gentle slopes. And the plantings will be put up on the top. So I think you're going to find this is a. A pretty nice buffer from Route ten. And of course, the intent is. With the remaining land between this project and Route ten is to put more development. This is only five acres out of seventeen point seven three acres of land. So as the PAD continues to be developed. There's going to be development in front of this building between it and Route ten. Because again, if we look at the the aerial. You can see we are a considerable distance away from Hot Metal Street. And this land here is all the berm will be right where the word site is. So all of the land in front of the berm between the berm and. Route ten will be developed someday. There's no wetlands there or anything to prohibit any type of development.
Okay, so it appears that the top of the the roofs will be visible, but the normal. Sides of the buildings will be shielded.
Exactly. The normal activities where you would see some vehicles driving around the building or doorways and things of that nature, those will all be shielded by the firm.
Okay, what color roof are we putting on this?
Dave, what's the specific color? Do you know?
I think with the roof, we have some flexibility. I would be inclined to say something earth tones, either, you know, like a dark green or a brown.
Standing seam, isn't it?
I'm sorry?
A standing seam roof?
Yes, I believe it is, Kevin. And, you know, we do, at this point, we haven't finalized on the colors. We know that we're going to stay with earth tones, but, you know, it's all subject to approval.
Okay, and then just, I know you don't have any lines of parking. Showing on your site plan here for around the two southern buildings, the the four buildings, you know, people kind of park in front of their own unit. But when you get down to the other end where you're going to have doors and people are doing the internal. There isn't any line parking at all there?
No, normally, normally we don't have spaces other than the ones up by the office. People basically pull up to the doors, unload their, you know, their belongings. Pack things away and get back in their car and leave.
Okay. And it's not a problem?
Not from our experience, no.
Okay, unless the football team that. Guys use it like they do at David's other place, yeah.
Yeah.
Gets a little crazy on those days.
Other commissioners have comments, questions? Didn't hear anything from.
Yeah. I have I have a few, Dave, but I'd like to hear from others.
Diane or?
Let's have a quick question. I don't know. What are the hours of facilities such as this? Is this open twenty four seven? A key code or are there?
It opens at seven AM. And closes at nine PM. So there's no gate access after nine. And the gates don't open until seven. And actually, in the evening, the lights get, you know, they turn down. And the light in the office will be on and it's monitored twenty four hours, twenty four seven with cameras now. So we have access to any security breaches. But it's not accessible. Twenty four hours a day.
Okay.
And there'll be a full time person on site. From eight o'clock to six o'clock each day.
Okay, Shannon, you have any questions?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Mike, we didn't get Jeff back, did we?
Yeah, Dave, I'm here. Actually, I was in another meeting. I just just came on.
Okay, our question was basically whether or not. You are satisfied that they are meeting the requirements. From an engineering standpoint.
Yeah, we did a pretty thorough review and I think we focused on the drainage was our biggest concern. This is kind of a unique facility in that. They're proposing a infiltration basin to really take care of all of the design storms that would be. You know, accommodated as part of our criteria. And they they actually did some subsurface investigation, I think they probably told you about. To confirm some of the soil characteristics today. And I did take a look at that and was comfortable with that. The only issue that's still out there for me, and it's really. Kind of a not really my issue is we're approving a development here that does not have access to a public road. And they cannot provide that at this point in time. It's something they're working on, but it's not available today. And that's very, very awkward for me. But that's that's up to the commission. Otherwise, I'm comfortable with the project.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Dave, it's Rich Korea. Can I comment on that?
Yes.
We have, we've had discussions with Chubb. And this is the classic catch twenty two. In order to come to the finalization of the agreement, they they need to know that this is the project. That's approved and we're not using this to come in and show up with something that would have a larger and a greater impact. So and also to be in exchange of. You know, consideration, if you will. And so before you would get into a final agreement, the, you know, they want to know what the project is and this is. And that this is what it is.
Okay, but it's it's the developer's risk here.
Correct.
I believe, Mike, is that correct?
That's correct. And so I I suggested an option for the commission is that. No certificate of occupancies to be issued for this development. Until they can prove they have needed access through the Chubb driveway. Otherwise. Their only other option is they have to come back before the commission modify the site plan showing driveway access out to Route ten.
Okay. Or helicopter pad.
Something.
Something, okay. All right, commissioners. What's your feeling on this?
Well, I have a couple more questions.
Go ahead, Bruce.
Yeah. One is, I don't know if there was a sketch of it. I'm interested in that fallback of. If Chubb doesn't come through as the agreement that's needed, where is the likely roadway out to Route ten? Is it to the traffic light? At Old Metal Plane?
I would, I would, I would say that the most logical entrance would be there. It would come out at the traffic light at Old Metal Plane, yeah.
Although that might compromise the potential for the rest of the site, you know, development of the rest of the site, but I'm, that's not my concern. I'm just interested in what you're thinking is. I. There was mentioned earlier that the color of the roof. The colors plural was used, haven't been selected yet. I'm I'm not understanding that. We're at this stage and there there aren't colors selected. Why is that?
We've selected colors. The outside of the buildings will be a natural tone and the doors for the units will be a. Like a dark green, which is really standard in the industry. And then the roofs are usually a. They're typically a metal. Steel color. They're not black, obviously. So I guess the best closest color I would say would be silver. Not bright silver, a little bit dark. Alright, so what you see are the colors we have selected. Which again is the the green doors and the natural tone. Like what we did on West Street, almost exactly the same. So those are what we are going with.
So they are selected. Okay.
Correct.
Then, let me ask you this too. I'm interested in whether what your knowledge is relative to the parcel. That you're developing. If you could switch to one of the maps that shows. The layout of where the buildings are on that property. I want to ask a question about that. Okay. There are monitoring, there are two monitoring wells along the. Eastern edge of the property that you are going to be developing. They're approximately fifty feet from the asphalt on the the walking path. So they're within the area you're developing. One is about two hundred and fifty feet from the chain link fence that separates this old CLMP property. From where you're developing. The other one's about three hundred and fifty feet from the roadway that Chubb owns coming in. And so I'm interested, the these things have been there for a long time, but they're definitely monitoring wells. They're capped, they're locked. And I'm interested in if you're whether you're aware of what exactly they are monitoring. I know one of them has a marker on it, you know, vinyl pink vinyl marker the surveyor put on it recently. I'm not sure that I saw that artifact on any of your drawings, but. Is that something any of you are familiar with? These monitoring wells and what exactly they might be monitoring or not?
We lost Jeff, I think.
No, I'm here, Dave.
You know anything about this? Monitoring wells and that?
I don't. Anecdotally, I've heard that there was a release at CLMP and again. Years ago, don't know any of the details. I suspect it's related to that, but I can't absolutely tell you for sure, sure.
Okay. Okay, well, we don't know what it is and we'll probably stay there. Bruce, get any more questions?
This is Mark Greenberg. I can speak on the environmental issue if you want.
Sure.
CLMP resources on the last stages of a full cleanup of that site. And actually, they were very active on the property line between this lot and the CLMP lot. Probably in the last two months. But they're under agreement with me and of course, it's an establishment, so they're finishing up their environmental cleanup. I would say over the next two years. By the end of two years, the final report should be filed.
Okay. What impact does it have on this project?
Nothing.
So the monitoring wells aren't monitoring anything? Is that what you're telling us?
Well, they're 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 in the final stages of showing through these quarterly reports that there's no. Intamination at this point in time.
So quarterly reports are being generated from the results of those wells?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
Typically, in this type of a situation, they'll install wells down, you know, downstream. Of where there might be some concern and they'll monitor those for a period of time. So I'm sure that's what what those wells are doing. Whether or not they're detecting anything is in the in the reporting and the cleanup process, but. That's generally what they'll do is they'll have monitoring wells on the facility and then monitoring wells around the facility to see if if anything is leaching through the groundwater or. Through the soils around the site.
Mr. Greenberg's informed us that the quarterly reports being generated are not reporting. Any findings or any hazardous findings, I suppose.
Well, they're reporting less and less findings and I believe the most recent reports were below standards set by the. I mean, if I if I had a pointer, I'd show you the areas of concern. I don't think I. Somebody wants to give me the control on this screen, I'd be happy. Do I control? No.
No, I'm not sure how we would do that in Zoom.
Okay.
Okay, I think that's beside the point at this point. Further questions of the commission? Are we ready to make a motion? Are we ready to make a motion? Mike? Mike has given us a staff recommendation that it be approved with, we could approve it with seven conditions. If we're ready to do that?
And I want to raise another issue, Dave.
Okay, go ahead.
And that's really for the commission, but the the use of, or the you know, actually building self-storage at this stage. I need a clarification that in Mike's summary, he's identified, going back to the PAD, that this use is permitted. And because it was industrial, and maybe that's where I'm confused, because the current industrial zoning, I-1 and I-2, are silent. I mean, as of June 20th last year, when we approved them, they're silent on self-storage in the industrial zones. But in our recent meetings and discussion about what we could do with the industrial zones to make them potentially a bit more robust in the development, we've talked about adding the self-storage use within I-1 and I-2. And I know from having sat through the meetings, and I think most of you have too, there isn't any real pushback on that so far. But we haven't acted on the addition of self-storage to the industrial zone. And while we may, are likely to do that in the near future, it hasn't been done at this stage, and consequently, if that, if my understanding is accurate, I don't see that we have the authority to approve this application at this time, given that the current I-1 and I-2 are silent on self-storage. And we feel it's necessary to add the word self-storage and the provision that it requires a site plan in a coming amendment to our regulations, which we have every intention of having public input and comment on. Or we did, but I think we still intend to do that. So there's my concern, that I'm not sure. If my understanding is accurate, I don't see us as having the authority to approve self-storage in an I-1 or an I-2 area at this time.
Bruce, we'll ask the question that I this is a separate zone, it's a pad zone, and I think the uses that are permitted are uses that we can choose.
Well, I think Mike's references to the underlying zone is where we're looking for authorization for this. Maybe Mike can speak up and clarify.
Yeah, can I clarify that? So the other two self-storage facilities in town are also located in I-1 zoning districts, and they were approved under the reg of warehouse manufacturing processing of goods as site plan approvals for both of them. So the commission is already actually, by those two historical approvals, kind of put this use under that category. I know that we're clarifying it with our potential updates to the zoning regs, but I mean, historically, that's the use, that's the the section of the regs that you've put this particular use in in the past. Like I said, you have two facilities that were approved the same way.
Okay.
Okay.
Does anyone, someone want to make a motion? Mike?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve application 21-06 of 34 Hot Meadow Street. Realty Company LLC owner David Burr and David Richmond, applicants for a site plan approval for the construction of a storage facility located at the northeastern corner of 34 Hot Meadow Street, Zone I-1/PAD. The approval is subject to the following conditions. Final plans to incorporate changes requested by the town engineer. These are to be reviewed and approved prior to filing of plans. Two, the applicant is to provide two milars and one paper set, which are to be signed by the chairman. One is to be filed on the Simsbury Land Records with the Office of the Town Clerk. The second milar is to be filed with the Engineering Department. An administrative zoning permit is required for the project. An infiltration test was completed today, I believe, but I'll read this requirement anyway. An infiltration, an infiltration test is required in the area of the proposed basin. Test is to confirm that the soils are as permeable as referenced in the drainage study. Results of the infiltration test are to be provided to the town engineer and town planner. No certificate of occupancy is to be issued until the applicant can provide legal deeds deeded access for the use of Chubb driveway to the north. WPCA is to approve all sanitary sewer connections. And finally, the commission authorizes our staff to act on our behalf concerning authorizing minor changes to the approved plans, such as landscaping, grading, lighting. Said changes to be made in writing to the planning department's staff and approved before they are implemented.
Second.
Second by?
Kevin.
Kevin, okay. Further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Abstaining? Nobody. So it carries six, nothing. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck, gentlemen.
Good luck.
Nice evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next application is 2109 of the town of Simsbury. Jeff Shea is to tell us about the site plan amendment for the parking lot at Town Hall, I believe.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. So yeah, this project, the Town Town Hall Parking and Safety Improvements Project is a project we've been working on for actually several years off and on. You know, this project allowed us an opportunity to look at the entire Town Hall campus and kind of master plan what improvements were required for the various departments that use the facility. It was also driven, this project, by safety concerns. As you know, there was a pedestrian accident out in front of Town Hall as part of the pedestrian crossing that occurred, and there was also some near misses there. So that had us looking at access for both pedestrian crossings and for vehicular access. Since there is a lot of conflicts between vehicular traffic and pedestrians at the main entrance to Town Hall. So the plan includes a relocated crosswalk along Route 10. It's going to be relocated to the south. And the main entrance to Town Hall is going to be actually closed where it is currently, and it's going to be relocated to the north, adjacent to the Martocchio's Music Property. So this is going to hopefully reduce the number of conflicts, still allow unfettered access through two entrances and exits to Town Hall campus. And it also improves safety, hopefully, for both entering and exiting vehicles and for pedestrians. In addition, we're looking at lighting. Lighting is fairly poor on the campus currently. So we're looking to supplement the lighting with both period lighting, like it currently exists throughout the campus, and also within the main parking field, we're looking to put large, higher mounted luminaires at 30 feet, so we can maintain the current openness of that main parking area. It reduces our maintenance, allows us to plow very easily through that area. But we'll provide, again, a more consistent lighting for the campus. And we're trying to achieve, you know, moderate lighting. We're not trying to light it up like a Christmas tree. It's going to be one to two foot candles throughout the area. So we feel it's going to be still, you know, keeping in the character of Town Hall, but provide a little bit more light for people using the facility for nighttime meetings and for employees, you know, leaving at night when we work late to their cars. So we have a pretty robust lighting improvement as part of the project. We're also going to be improving the landscaping, obviously, the pavement, drainage. We're going to be implementing some low-impact development drainage improvements to improve water quality, leaving the site. So it's a pretty comprehensive plan. We're presently looking at Phase 1 because the funding is limited right now. We don't have the full funding required for the project. But we did want to get approval for the entire plan, so we could you know, roll it out in phases as funding becomes available. So that's kind of a summary. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Dave Ziyak. He's going to give you more specifics about the project. David, is there?
Yes, Jeff, thanks a lot. Again, Dave Ziyak's a professional engineer with FA Hesketh. We're located next door over near East Granby. And as Jeff pointed out, we've been we've been working with staff now for a little over a year on this, but I know they've spent a lot more time on it. You know, looking at both the safety improvements and then just the physical improvements that you need to make every 20 years or so for the purposes of maintenance and you know, maintaining modern-day standards of design. And looking at the Town Hall property, it's kind of interesting. It's on a it's on a 5.77 acre site, but about 1.7 acres of that is the slope area, wooded area behind the Town Hall that goes up to the school property to the rear. And there's actually a paved pathway that comes down from the school areas and cuts through the Town Hall area, provides access for the public in that fashion, and so that's part of the overall pedestrian improvements that we're proposing. The Town Hall is in the center zone. It's considered a civic site. So the developed portion of the site is about four acres out of that 5.77 acres. And working with staff, since this is, you know, a site plan application, a modification, just following a normal protocol, was kind of interesting, working on a zoning data table for this property, because it's if you're familiar at all, you know, with your regulations as it relates to the center zone and civic sites, that zone has a large amount of criteria that you need to look at when you're proposing a development in the center zone. And we've laid all those barriers criteria out on this title page, and a lot of it is, because it's in a civic property, it, a lot of the criteria is not applicable for the site or barriers. But we gave it a you know, a look at and indicated how the proposed conditions match the required conditions. And one of the things was, you know, how do we stand with parking requirements? And as it turns out, there really is no standard for parking for the Town Hall or for the Police Department, so basically, you have around, we'll end up with about exactly the same number of spaces. I think we might be one or two short. But our spaces, our layout, conform to all of the town's criteria for design of a parking lot. Whereas a lot of the existing spaces out there do not conform to the size, you know, and location of what you would expect on your typical site plans today, so while the number is around the same, the parking lot will be very efficient and will meet, you know, current day's design standards. There will be six ADA assessable parking spaces. We'll take a look at the site plan. So this is basically the layout sheet for the property. Again, I'll turn over to my pointer. The Town Hall is here, and we have the police located on the south end and over on the west end of the building. This is sort of the main public entrance here on the north side of the building. There's a secondary entrance here on the easterly side of the building, but that has you know, a rather formal staircase to get in there, so your main ADA route and access to staff and the you know, Town Clerk and the like is usually comes in off the north side. What we're going to be doing is redesigning the layout of this entire layout of the parking. We're going to be relocating a bit the ADA parking spaces to an area where we can achieve the proper grades that meet ADA standards. We'll be introducing a six-foot wide flush walking path through this area, so when you exit your vehicle and you're parked in the ADA spaces, you'll be able to go into the safety of the six-foot wide area and then cross across the standard striped crosswalk into the properly designed ramps to gain access to the Town Hall. Presently, you have to walk around the back of the spaces, which really is frowned upon, particularly when you're doing new design. In the spirit of true ADA design, you should be able to go to a safety walkway in front of the parking spaces, which then directs you directly to a painted crosswalk and then towards the facility you're going. So this has been brought up to all of the current standards and designs that you would expect for properly designed ADA parking spaces. As Jeff pointed out, this is the main entrance and exit for the Town Hall now. It's located right where my pointer goes, and it goes straight up in front of the building. What this proposal is, is to relocate that driveway to the north end of the property. And then there, the new main east-west driveway will be up along the north end of the property, and that will allow you to filter into this parking area here. This parking area located down here more towards Route 10. And then up to the spaces that are, you know, public parking for, the police use a lot of this for parking up in this area. And this row of spaces tends to be full of cruisers and emergency vehicles associated with the Police Department. So basically, what this does is this is going to quiet this entrance here for vehicles coming and going from you know, the facility, you know, greatly over what currently exists. If the police are parked in this area here and they need to leave quickly the site, it requires them to pass pretty much in front of the Town Hall and then exit at this location. So they'll be going out at this new northerly entrance here, which we think is a big safety improvement over the access to this whole northern portion of the facility. Down here at the southern portion, this driveway will remain. Again, this is an access to the entrance here for the Police Department that uses this area here and then the back area behind the building. It also provides access to the butters to the south of the Town Hall. Basically, all we're going to do there is just clean up the geometry and make that follow the standards that currently exist. And then the parking that's along the easterly face here of the Town Hall, no one's quite sure as to why it's angled in the direction it's angled, because it's a two-way driveway behind it. But we're going to square that off to conventional 90-degree parking and clean up this entire area here. There'll be a new sidewalk all along the northerly face of the Town Hall. And then up here, there's an existing set of stairs that lead you up to this upper parking area. But if you want to go up to where the walkway is, heading off to the school property, you basically create a gravel pathway in this location. There's no formal walkway. We're going to be introducing another set of stairs in this area here, and we'll clean up these stairs, put new handrails and lighting there. And then block off the walkway further to the south, because right now, what the folks will do is walk along the walkway back along the top of the slope and then come down a small set of stairs located here near the Police Department. None of this really meets any reasonable standards. So this area here will be blocked off, and the public will be directed down this new set of stairs and then into the normal walkway, which ties everything into, you know, along the face of the Town Hall. As part of the plan, we also have improvements to the, I'll call it the park here in front of the Town Hall. One of the things that staff would like to do is relocate the flagpole and put it over here, make it part of the parkway, part of the park. And then to improve the ADA access for the public that's walking along the sidewalk on Route 10 is we'll, we have to do some reconstruction of the brick walk here that takes you into this little center area here. And then we're going to introduce a new walkway that will take you to a new crosswalk that will be established here at this intersection, which will be properly signed with stop bars, pedestrian signage. And then that will get you in this new route that will lead you up to the Town Hall here for the public. That route currently doesn't exist. It's located a little further over here. But this is not an ADA route. And then again, there's the stair obstacle at this staircase for the building anyhow, so this is not an ADA route. So we would bring you in and get you onto this sidewalk the proper way, and then you can, you know, enter the building at this location. So when this driveway is closed, basically, we're just going to So when this driveway is closed, basically, we're just going to add a few, three parking spaces would be located at this, this location. The electric car charging stations will stay. We have some discussions going on with staff about adding the, the additional ability to add more EV stations with the anticipation that more electric cars are going to be coming on the road, you know, as time passes. So we'll be putting in some conduits and things of that nature so that more EV stations can be, you know, added relatively easy to the site, you know, as demand grows for that type of ability to charge the vehicles. Jeff mentioned we're adding a couple of light standards and shifting around some light standards to get a nice consistent look and, and feel to the lighting on, in the parking lot. We are making drainage improvements. We are incorporating some water quality basins, one located here. That will receive sheet runoff from this parking area. Get some treatment before it gets into the, the drainage system. The entire drainage system for this lot drains to the state system on Route 10. And currently, everything is just connected directly to Route 10 and does not provide much in the way of water quality. So we have a water quality basin located here. And we're going to introduce another shallow water quality basin at this, this area here in the park. These will be mowed grass basins that will provide some water quality. Have an infiltrator system installed on them. Again, this, this, this parking area will sheet flow off into there. It does that now. And then for areas that we can't capture, to go into the water quality, we're going to capture most of those areas by installing hydrodynamics separator structures, which are state of the art down here close to Route 10 before the system's connected into Route 10. And those structures will do a good job in cleaning the stormwater runoff from, from the paved parking areas before it's discharged. Landscaping improvements. We have a full landscaping plan. We'll be adding some additional trees in the parking areas and around the perimeter. Then we're looking at adding in some foundation plantings along the easterly side of the building. There's virtually no landscaping there now. It's, it's just a mowed lawn. So we'll be looking at adding some, you know, foundation plantings to break up that and some, some nice shade trees along, along that edge of the curbing there. And then there's a long-term study going on along the easterly side. Right now, there's a lot of large, older rhododendron and some other shrubberies along that area that's blocking the look of some of the HVAC, air conditioning and other types of equipment that have been installed over the years. And that, that vegetation does a good job in shielding that right now. So the thought was, since there's also some, from my understanding from Jeff, there's a long-term study going on about possible, you know, modifications or improvements that need to be made to the town hall just to bring it up to current spec for, you know, energy and things of that nature and maybe better access from ADA perspective, things of that nature that you guys typically do when you study your buildings. The thought being right now is we would leave all that existing vegetation there. We may have to trim it a bit just to get our, our new sidewalks constructed. But leave it there, let it do what it's doing now, which is to buffer all that equipment in that face of the building until, you know, much bigger decisions are made down, down the path or down the road by the town as to, you know, what if any architectural changes are going to be made and whether or not that equipment can be moved, you know, possibly to another location or inside or up on the roof, something like that, which would free up the view of that side of the building. And then maybe an entirely different type of landscaping could be put at that location. But for now, the plan is to leave it in place until those other studies are completed and then introduce some, you know, more modern foundation plantings along the east side of the building that the public really sees as you're walking along Route 10. Lastly, we have improvements along Route 10. Currently, the sidewalk along that road is in bad shape and it doesn't really drain very well because it's, the elevation of it in respect to the road isn't right. So we'll be reconstructing that sidewalk along the entire length. It will pass through as, as a sidewalk through the two main driveways that, you know, the relocated north driveway and the reconstructed south driveway. We're looking at constructing that out of concrete with brick edging along both sides of it to give it that nice look that will be consistent with the other brick walks that are in town. That's a design that we've used in several other towns. And it gives you a nice mix of the brick look and then the concrete in the center, which from a maintenance point of view and a trip and fall point of view is, is, you know, preferred over the, the entire 100% brick walk, which is long-term quite a maintenance issue. And it does have some trip and fall issues and it has ADA issues too. Because if you're riding in a wheelchair along there, it's a pretty bumpy ride. So the, the sort of compromise is a concrete sidewalk in the center and then edge it on both sides with, with the brick that's consistent with the other brick in the, in the walkways feeding it. It'll give it a nice.
Our engineers doing this too. Hesketh guy that we hired.
So, and as Jeff pointed out, in working with the crosswalk situation that we have here presently, again, this is a considerable safety improvement, we believe. This is the south driveway. There is a painted crosswalk on the south side of that driveway that leads you to the little island that's in the center, sort of the median of the drive, the split driveway that feeds the shops across the street. And at that location, that's kind of an awkward location. It's not properly ramped. And it does not really give you a true ADA accessibility at that most location. Down here at the bottom sheet, this is the existing north drive, center drive, and there's a painted crosswalk there that leads you over towards where the post office driveway is. And there's been issues with that, as Jeff pointed out, with accidents located at that location. And again, it's, it's not properly ramped to meet current standards. And then when you get to this location, if you're, it seems like a lot of the pedestrian activity there is, you know, directed to and associated with going to the shops and probably primarily to Starbucks located at that location. And, and it's just not, it's just not a good location for that, particularly since we'll be closing this driveway off and adding a couple of parking spaces at that location. We're really going to try to defocus that area away from pedestrian activity. So we've selected as a new central point for a driveway, which will be basically centered on the town hall building. And it is directed towards, and pointed right at the main sidewalk that comes in from the shops. That's sort of in the south side of Starbucks. That seems to be the main focus of activity, pedestrian activity wants to get to this location anyhow. So we're looking at establishing, you know, well-designed, properly signed crosswalk at this location with the right kinds of ramps at both ends that will tie into our new sidewalk here along Route 10. It will tie into the existing sidewalk over on the easterly side of Route 10. We're looking at relocating a light standard or two. You know, as you know, you have your, your town lighting system along Route 10, the architectural type of lighting. We're looking at relocating that to this location to really, really make this area well-defined. And we're looking at installing what is called an RRFB system, which is a crosswalk system. And the RRFB stands for, it's an acronym for rectangular rapid flashing beacon system. Sounds pretty official. But basically, you're starting to see these installed by your public works department at various locations around town where they're trying to improve the safety. And basically, it's a flashing beacon sign, you know, rather than just a static pedestrian crossing sign. You push your button and you get a flashing beacon to warn everyone that there's someone at the crossing, the painted crossing that wants to cross the street and that you must stop in that, in that situation. These are being, starting to be used in many, many locations throughout Connecticut and elsewhere. Seems to be very successful and well, well-received once they're installed. We're thinking of using the solar paneled ones so we don't have to connect it to the public lighting system and our electrical system. And, and again, I haven't had an opportunity to look around town, but Jeff has indicated that they are actively installing these things at various locations around town. And this system would be basically the same system so that from a maintenance point of view, it would be easy to repair. This will be a system that will have to be owned by the town and maintained by the town because the state DOT will not do that. So that's basically, it's a lot. But as you can see, a lot of thought's been put into making safety improvements. And in addition to the normal kind of long-term maintenance improvements that the town hall needs, you know, touching up sidewalk, you know, installing granite curving. Right now, you have about three different kinds of curving out in the, you know, parking lot. This would make it everything all consistent long-term. And bring the drainage system up to current standards and bring your ADA accessibility up to current standards and, and have a good interface between the, the police department and its activities. And I, I'm particularly happy to see the driveway moved because it will quiet that whole area in front of the town hall versus now where everything basically has to travel across the front of that north face of the town hall in order to gain access to Route 10. By forcing everyone to the north and out that driveway, it will quiet that whole area down and make it a much better pedestrian area to gain access to the town hall. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mike, what's, what's the timing of this application? There's a lot of things going on here. Probably a lot of questions. Mike, Glenn?
What do you mean by the, the timing, Dave?
Well.
The urgency of this? Jeff Shay maybe can speak to that on his plans on what's his perfect world and starting construction.
My perfect world, Mike, would have been the start last summer during COVID. But unfortunately, we weren't there yet. It was, would have been a great time. The parking lot was very lightly used. But right now, we're hoping to catch the summer season when the Board of Ed is very light on their personnel. And we feel we can accommodate, you know, that during the summer best as opposed to waiting till later this year when things maybe ramp up. There's more public activity at town hall. So we were hoping we could get out to bid and get started sometime in late June. Try to complete the bulk of the work by the start of school, which is the end of August.
Okay. Okay, let's open it up for questions of the commissioners.
I have a question.
Yes.
Thank you. That, that report was very thorough. I actually have several questions, but I'm just going to start with this first one. When you're talking about relocating the main entrance, that goes behind Martocchio's music, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I'm just curious if they are aware of this. And I ask this only because I know they run a lot of camps and there's lots of children kind of running around that parking lot. So it just brings up some safety red flags to me. So that's my first question.
So yes, we did coordinate with the Martocchios and presented the project to them. They're supportive of the project. The one thing they did ask for was a, a barrier between the driveway and their property because I guess at some times during their activities, people try to drive actually onto their property from our parking lot. We also are accommodating pedestrian crossings from our parking lot to their property by keeping an opening in a wood rail fence, which is going to be the barrier that we've selected. And we're thinking that the timing of their activities versus the town's peak hour probably won't coincide. But, you know, it is a concern. We did think about that. But at the end of the day, the, you know, the facility has to really, first and foremost, serve the, the public good. And really, there's no formal arrangement with Martocchio. So it's really a matter of convenience right now for them. But we feel it's, you know, they felt it was not a dangerous condition as long as there was a way for pedestrians to pass and repass from our parking lot to their facility.
Okay. Go ahead, do another one, Jim.
I have another one. Okay, so when you were speaking of the upper parking lot and the, so the upper parking lot where there are police vehicles parked. And then were you, I'm just a little confused. Was there a gravel path below that or, you know, in between the upper and lower level police parking lots? I was confused about what was there.
Yeah, so right now, there's really a, just a path through the woods that connects the trail from Memorial School down to our upper parking lot. It's not really used by anybody. And what we're trying to do is encourage more use by, you know, formalizing that kind of connection. Because the, the connection, as Dave had said, down the south side of the police department, you know, funnels them really to that, that crosswalk that's very dangerous, going over to the shops.
Yes.
And, and also, you know, conflicts a bit with the police department activity, you know, with the cars coming in and out over there.
Right.
So this is a way of separating it, kind of funneling them through our campus and getting them to a safer crossing across Route 10.
Okay. But, but it is correct that that path was going to be gravel?
No, I think Dave was describing it as it exists today. What we're proposing is a formal set of stairs, six feet wide, that would actually, you know, make that change in grade.
Okay. Okay.
What I was, what I was referring to by the gravel was it's an informal gravel path that people have just created by walking it. And it's, it's a pretty unsafe condition because it's, it's a steep slope there right now.
Yes. Okay, thank you. That clarifies that for me. Okay, I'll stop for now. Thank you.
Okay, anybody, other commissioners have questions?
Well, I do. Just a couple of quick things. Dave gave a very thorough presentation. I'm essentially, I got the picture. I have two concerns. One is the dismissal of the brick sidewalk that the town spent a lot of taxpayer money on. Some of it came through the state, some of it came through the locals. But the concept was end-to-end in Simsbury, our sidewalks are brick. The brick sits on top of concrete. And now Dave has described to us the intention in this plan to remove all that and use the center section as concrete and the edging to be brick. I'm not a designer. I'm a citizen and I'm concerned about what happens with my taxes. I wasn't a big fan of putting bricks over the whole place and all that expense, but it was done. And I think we should give a good, serious thought to whether this really makes sense to be pulling all that up now and what it means for the rest of both sides of Route 10 from end to end in the center of town. My other thought is the description of identifying some plantings for the front of the, of the town hall where there are none. The fact that there are none is not an accident. It's a design style. I don't know if Kevin might have more to say about that than I do, but in historic old structures, it's common to have no plantings along the foundation. So I think it fits the age of the building myself. But again, I'm not a designer and it's a big project with lots going on. Those are my thoughts. And in the scheme of the whole thing, they're not terribly important, but I, I offer those comments.
Okay, anyone else? Kevin?
Yeah, I mean, I'm also concerned. I mean, we actually had a committee design streetscape on downtown. And now we're totally throwing out what the streetscape people said to do when they came back with the, the brick sidewalk. So I'm not sure why, especially in an area that we already paid to do, why we're undoing it. Why wouldn't we just stick with what we've got?
Didn't design review, look at this?
No, there was a separate group, the, the downtown. No, there was a separate group, the downtown.
Yeah, I know, but but I thought this application would have gone to DRB.
Oh, this one? I don't know.
No, this was not, this was not reviewed by DRB.
Is the reason for that piece of that piece of sidewalk so that it is more disability friendly? So that if you are in a wheelchair, you can navigate that safely?
I think I would say that that it is a smoother surface. Ultimately than what the existing paver sidewalk is. Shannon, you know, we've, we had a lot of discussions internally on this. And we thought this might be an opportunity to look at an alternative. It doesn't mean that we're going to be ripping out everything that's been invested in Main Street. But there has been some comment over the last recent years, you know, of the the surface of the pavers not being suitable for everybody. Although, in my opinion, they do meet ADA requirements. There's still some pushback from mostly, I'd say elderly people that use the sidewalks along Route 10. That, you know, they're they're unsteady on their feet.
Yes. Well, that's, I am on the Aging and Disability Commission, and that's why I bring it up because it is it is hazard for those who are unsteady on their feet. It's been brought up to Aging and Disability as well, so. I mean, it makes sense from that perspective to me.
So that's why the the sort of blend, we were trying to, you know, try to capture the the essence of the paver walk foot to provide a, you know, a more easily navigated navigable surface for the sidewalk.
Okay, more comments? Anything from Mike?
The presentation answered all of my questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. So are we thinking that we should give them the go ahead to do this or? Does it need more stewing?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add one thing too, that we didn't fail to mention. In the rear upper lot, we are proposing a storage building, a storage garage to for storage of equipment for public works in the police department. We did have a rendering of that. That's not something we're going to be constructing as part of the first phase, but we did want to cite it in a place that made sense for this plan. But I just wanted to mention that.
Okay. Okay.
Dave, I just present the Mike drafted for us so that we can
Somebody's got a mic open. Go ahead, Bruce.
Another question?
Go ahead, Bruce.
Okay. I I make a motion to approve application 2109 of the town of Simsbury. Owner Jeff Shay, owner. Jeff Shay, professional engineer, town engineer applicant for site plan amendment for parking lot improvements landscaping, stormwater management and parking lot lighting modifications for the property located at 933 Hot Meadow Street. Assessor's map H09 block 202 lot 001. For lighting modifications for the property located at 933 Hot Meadow Street Assessor's map. I just read that line twice. Assessor's map H09 block 202 lot 001. Zone SC1. The approval is subject to the following condition. An administrative zoning permit is required for the work. End of motion.
Second by Mike. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Any abstain? Nope. It carries six nothing. Thank you very much, Jeff.
Thanks.
Well done.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah.
Have a great night.
Okay. And we have TJ who's been lurking all night. TJ, can you hear us?
What happened to the other application we had that's on the agenda before we get to?
It's a signage thing.
Which?
Mike's sub shop.
It disappeared.
Yeah, Jersey mics.
Yeah, Jersey mics.
Jersey Mike is not on the agenda.
It was this morning.
Which one have I got? amended agenda?
It's under new business number 2A.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Just didn't read it. Okay. What did we do? We skipped it. That's what happened.
You skipped over it. I didn't want to interrupt it because you already got started with Jeff, but
Yeah, sorry.
Before we go to the next preliminary.
Let's go back to, uh, pen, uh, application 21 dash 08. For Jersey Mike's sign. Mike?
Mr. Chairman, I don't see the applicant here, but I I could speak to the application quick.
Okay.
It was reviewed tonight by DRB and a favorable recommendation was issued. The plan calls for slightly enlarging the signs for the former Peach Wave location. The applicant looked at the Fitzgerald sign and used the same design for the Fitzgerald sign for this. Really, it's it's the S in Jersey mics that sticks out from the from the box that used to hold the the Peach Wave logo. You could see the difference in the, in my staff report, what it looks like. It's about an addition of two square feet for the signs. It's it's minor. It conforms to the design standards. And it'll be reverse halo lit, so they're meeting also lighting standards. We had that discussion upfront that it cannot be internally lit. So this is, it meets your regs. It's it's ready to, for for an approval if, should the commission choose.
Okay, anybody have some comments? Other comments?
Well, I just wasn't sure. Are they, is there a backboard to this or is it applied to the brick?
It's applied to the brick.
Okay, I just seconded because the way they did it, it had a little little brick colored plain space, so I couldn't tell if they were blocking out the brick or not.
Okay, comments, Bruce?
Just a follow up question, Mike, that yes, it's two square feet, but it's two square feet on the front, two square feet on the side, so it's four square feet more signage Peach Wave had. But does that throw off the ratio with the rest of the tenants in the plaza or the total allocation for the plaza?
Thanks, Bruce. Yeah, yeah, no. So we looked at that to see if it didn't have an adverse effect on the the total square footage that's allowed. No, there was still excess signage allowed. So we were able to accommodate this small request of enlarging the signs due to the corporate entity without, you know, ignoring our regulations or the or the sign allotment for the rest of the tenants. Good, thank you.
Other questions? Are we ready for a motion? Somebody want to make a motion?
I just have a comment that I'm glad to see a signage thing for that plaza that we can go right ahead with. I'm just letting my other colleagues feel pretty good about it too. Because I remember how disappointed the owners representative was last year, maybe the year before, but the last time we saw him, it was kind of a bitter meeting for him and anyway.
He left unhappy.
Yes, but
We have a motion. Staff has given us this motion. Mike?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve application 21 dash 08 of GPF Drake Hill LLC owner Andrea Faulkner applicant for sign plan modification for the installation of new signs for the former Peach Wave location to accommodate the new Jersey mics at 710 Hot Meadow Street Drake Hill Mall Assessor's map G10 block 227 lot 001 plus two zone SC1 with the following condition, uh, subject to, the approval is subject to the following condition, excuse me. An administrative zoning permit is required for the installation of the signs.
Second.
Second by Kevin. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed abstain. Carry six nothing. Thank you very much. Okay, now. I believe we're on to new business item two, which is a discussion which I think TJ is prepared to carry on. Is that right, Mike?
Yep. TJ and Dan Lays are here. So I'll turn turn it over to TJ.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, thank you for the opportunity to have this informal discussion on the status and the thoughts and the future of development at the Hartford site property, Talcat Ridge at Simsbury. I put together a presentation for you that I hope that Mike will send to you and that we can run through the slides now to stay in order and to try to get through the material and and get on to the point of it. The first slide that we give you is a profile of the Silverman Group. That's important for us to know because they they undertook the Hartford site as a, as kind of a partner with the town with Form Based Code. They're delighted with the town. Their profile is important though because they're investors, they're not builders and sellers, so several other projects in Simsbury, the developer develops them and they sell them, but the Silverman Group is a family owned business. It's going to own that property for as long as they can see and as far as they can see. And that's the impressive slide which shows their their holdings and I hope Michael send that to you. Next slide, Mike. So this is the Hartford site. It's an early site. It's an early picture, but it shows you on the left hand side of your screen is the is what's called the South Site and that's where the Hartford Insurance Building was. It was raised and it then that's somewhat what the site looks like today. On the right hand side of the picture is the Ridge at Talcot, which is 150 units completed, 140 fully leased. And they hope to complete construction on that project on the northern site by in 2022. We're here for, to just, to raise for discussion and to ask your input for three items on that site. And we'll get to it, but the the three items are, we need some addition, that it's required, it's desired to have additional parking because of the way the use of the property has and the profile of the tenants has been very successful, but everybody has two cars. We didn't think that. We want to have your consideration and input on possibly changing the we put in, there were designed two commercial buildings in the front of the site right across from the tennis house. They have absolutely no traction in the marketplace. They've, we've stood on our heads or the Silvermans have stood on their heads and done everything possible to rent those spaces and they lay fallow. What they'd like to do with the northern structure, which was going to be a retail structure. They'd like to convert that to a single family apartment structure with a very, what they feel is a very important design component for the streetscape that's consistent with Simsbury and I'll show you what that's, they'd like that to look like. And also, they're going to as they come forward with this, they're going to try to get cited what the fire company wants, which is a access to the river with the a facility which would have a gravel driveway down and and would be able to turn the the fire department's truck and trailer, et cetera. And the final thing would be that if we can get buy in from the town and interest in changing what we do with the South Side a little bit or a lot, we could create, continue the the walking trail, which is now a mile trail around the the north side and connect it to the south side. Next slide, please, Mike. This is an actual photograph from a drone of the Ridge at Talcot as it looks today. It's looking from the mountain down and it's looking across the townhomes in the back and you see the construction in the middle there. And then it looks out to the tennis house across the street on the other side of the street. Right where it says page down on your slide would be the area that the gravel drive would go down to the river for the fire company and for general access to the river. Next, please. The development was done for the Hartford Form Based Code. And it was proceeded on, on, under the assumption, and in fact, we were allowed under the code to do a north section and a south section. So we did a north site master plan, which you'll see today, which we're trying to modify a bit. And the south side was deferred without plan. Now we'd like you to be very involved in helping us figure out what we can do on the south side for the good of the development, for the good of the town. The north side status is that residential development utilization continue to be robust. The retail and commercial initiatives have no traction whatsoever. And the mix of residences have found great acceptance. The request for consideration will be, this is not a formal application, but we intend to file a formal application with you soon to modify the master plan to provide that the north commercial structure, which is unbuilt at this point, be converted to be a 15 one bedroom units to respond to the market and to create a distinctive and compatible structure with the development. And then we want you to consider the the boat ramp to the river and the addition of 19 parking spaces to the north of apartment AP81A, which I'll show you in a second. And the conversion of the building. So if you keep scrolling down, Mike, we'll get to the picture of the structure. This is the design structure for the alternate to the commercial building. It's designed to to sit and identify the site. It would sit in front of the assisted living facility. And it would have 15 one bedroom units in it. Next picture, please, Mike. And that's an alternate view of it from the front. Next.
Where's Hot Meadow Street, TJ?
In front of it. To the left of it.
Okay. Thank you.
This is shows the site and it shows the areas that I talked about. At the top of the site, that's where the boat ramp would go. At the bottom of the site, that's where the conversion would be from the units. From a retail building, we can't do anything with to a 15 single, one bedroom apartments, which people are screaming for. On the left side of the site is where the two bays of parking would be added. And on the right hand part, lower part of the site is where the walking trail would be continued to intersect the south side. Next picture, please. This is just an enlargement and and you'll get a copy of these and can look at them and before we get in, but those are the copies of where the actual additional parking spaces would be. Staff's advised us for any consideration that there's going to be significant landscaping and protection of the adjacent properties, which we agree is a very appropriate. And that's the, that's what I just showed you in green that just shows how the parking will be and that'll be in the in the package that you get or the section. This is the area which is now to be retail or commercial. Those spaces exist as they are, but the footprint of the building is going to be what you saw in terms of the barn shaped residential facility that they got. And that's another picture of the proposed modification of the commercial structure. On the left hand side front is is the commercial structure, which would now be 15 single family apartments. This is what shows what the trail would be, the connection to the trail and upon this, we'd bring it along right where it is now. There's a leg off there and bring it along the road. And then hook it up to the crosswalk over to the Canal Place Crossing. This is a picture of the gravel facility near the Farming River, the new bridge they built on Waterville Road. And that's just for we believe is the appropriate surface treatment and it'll look something like that. Next slide, please. we believe is the appropriate surface treatment and it'll look something like that. Next slide, please. That just shows you where it is and how it works, but something like that, probably smaller, but we, the fire department wants something they can turn the trailer in. For the south side, we want to begin a discussion with you. We want your input. But what's become apparent to us and the Silverman family in the marketplace every day is that housing is an economic development and that the south other hopes that we hadn't, ideas that we had, the market and the location and everything else just doesn't bring it. We got close on a couple of projects, but it didn't bring it anything to us that we could do something with. So the, the time, what we're showing you tonight is what the market says will allow us to build. What the Simsbury Zoning Commission will allow us to build is something that's very much in their discretion. Because this is a form-based code and although the forms and the density is pretty much prescribed and set forth as to what it is. The uses are not, and the uses are a function of the Hartford Site Form-Based Code. So what we propose could only be enabled by you if we modify, well, if we established a master plan for the south site, south site that was not a true balanced multi-use type of site. So we intended, what we intend to show you is right now, the market tells us we could build single-family units and the market says to stand alone for sale and single-family units for rent. The market says that that would be a very hot commodity in Simsbury. And then the stacked flat apartments, which are very similar to the ones that we built on the south, we're interested in another six structures there oriented toward the north side. Next slide, please. The South Village will maintain existing berms and enhance the landscaping and connect the walking trail and reduce base elevations. Most of the south site as designed can be designed so that it will not even be visible from Hot Metal Street. And you recall that from the Hartford structure. This is the layout as it sits. We'd like you to look at that and think about it and consider it and see what you have to say about it. It's a large site and it has great potential and that also has our census as to what we project, the 50 homes for sale, 50 homes for rent and the other apartment buildings. And then there's just some text about the P O C D and the, you know, we believe that we can articulate the consistency with, with what it's supposed to be and what it can be. And next, Mike. All narrative that helps us talk about it, but next, Mike, just scrolling down. It's a very significant site. As you look at it, the town of Simsbury's involvement in this site with the establishment of a form-based code before Silverman was even in the picture has turned out to be quite a very successful thing. It's a it create, it replaced the hit the Grand List took from one of the loss of one of its largest taxpayers. It's been great and Silverman is very pleased to be in Simsbury and Silverman looks forward to partnering with the town to try to put together a concept and a plan that we can go forward with and complete the use of that site. We're here to start a dialogue, not to finish. Show you what the market tells us we can do now and we want any input. Now we're in subsequent meetings.
I have some comments. Thank you for that, TJ. I will be honest, I have some concerns out of the gate that number of apartment buildings in that particular area. For a number of reasons. The first of which is the schools and overburdening the schools as we are now, you know, renovating Latimer as a result of an influx into that apartment area and other areas around there. I love the idea of a retail space. I love the idea of a boat launch area. I think that's spectacular. I just have some concerns about the number of single, single unit apartments and that number of apartment buildings.
Okay. Are there's other comments?
I'm just bummed that no one can figure out how to do the retail in front of all these planned area development sites that we keep submitting into town or building into our town. You know, the Peach Wave site was empty for two months, three months, right? And it, they found a, they found a tenant. It can't be that hard to do retail in Simsbury. It just can't.
We were going to have some people come and talk to us, right, Mike? No, I know, I know that Mike Goman came to speak sometime back.
That was Mr. Greenberg.
No, Mike Goman came some years ago.
Oh, okay. It was Verna back. Faded away, Dave.
And his, his, and I think it was to the planning commission, we're doing a P O C D. And his point was that the traffic volumes on Hot Metal Street don't support much retail. That, that service industries and that kind of thing are what get what get it can be supported with the traffic level that's there. And so it may be as Dave, as Mark Greenberg said, if we get more rooftops, maybe we'll have more traffic, maybe we'll get more commercial demand, but I don't know yet. We haven't, we haven't seen it. I mean, it's not like they aren't looking for it. That building has been sitting there in the front of Talcat Ridge. And it's still empty as far as I know, right, TJ?
Yes, it is.
And the market for residences has gone crazy.
Someday that stops, though.
Someday it'll stop, but you don't, well, we don't want to be in this position of overbuilding and ending up with with slums in an area, but I don't think we're anywhere near that.
I, I puzzled like Commissioner Doyle does, I mean, but and it, and we would participate in any workshop, we would participate in any dialogue or discussion. Simsbury, Simsbury, and Simsbury is robust right now. And Simsbury, you know, despite COVID and everything else, we're very lucky to live in this town and have everything going for us the way we do. When Mike Goman talked about, and you know, Mike Goman is as smart as anybody in this business. Everyone wants to compare Simsbury to West Hartford. Well, West Hartford has four or five houses per acre. So it's got so many rooftops that are so proximate with such a population thing that even though the demographics might be the same, the number of people within the mile and five-mile concentric circles of retail, it's just, it's night and day. It's radically and dramatically different than what we have, but, but what, what we have, what the Silvermans have and what we work on is they're delighted with Simsbury. They're delighted with the building department, the planners. It's been a very positive project for them to build and they're in a lot of communities. And they, they would love to figure out with the town how we can finish the project because it's location is superb. I mean, you know, there were, during COVID, there were individuals and couples and families coming to their apartments here from New York and Boston. And they start looking for houses in Simsbury. They're so pleased with with our quality of life.
To Shannon's point, what, anybody know what the impact of the current site that's been built? What the, I, I know Latimer's bursting at the seams, but I have no statistics. My kids went to Latimer, but both my kids are in college now, so I'm out of touch with, you know, what's going on at Latimer, but my neighbors are all telling me that the place is stuffed to the gills.
Yeah, I kind of wonder if the, the plan that they're, that we're going to be voting on for Latimer, if that is planning for the future, if they've anticipated further I would hope so. I would hope they're not planning for the existing numbers, but
I can speak to that if I'm allowed to, even though I'm not seated.
You can say, you can speak.
I mean, just having attended the Board of Ed hearings, you know, about this issue, they're projecting Latimer to grow from the time Talcat Ridge came to when it starts to even out by about 400, 500 kids. And that's what they're planning for. So it's an exponential growth and Mike, my, my son went there as well. So it was already kind of stuffed to begin with. Dave, am I allowed to make any comments about this or is this in a formal place that I can't comment?
It's informal.
Okay, I have to say that I, it's not my experience that the Talcat Ridge apartments have been well received by the existing Simsbury community. I mean, this is just anecdotal, but people have expressed fairly universal outrage about the height and the proximity of the apartments to the road. And again, anecdotally, I live not far from there. I would be ecstatic to have some kind of commercial development. It's kind of a no man's land in terms of, in terms of amenities and ability to pop into a store of any kind. And I, I'm kind of incredulous that there can't be some kind of retail or commercial there because I know will be welcomed by the people who live here.
Thank you.
Yeah, actually, just to add to that, I've always, I wonder, has anybody polled, I mean, I know it's a small population relative to the whole town, but has anybody polled the residents of those, those newer communities down there to see what kind of amenities they would like? Because I mean, I would, can't help but think that they'd love like a little coffee shop that they could walk to or a market or, you know, something like that. I don't know. I mean, it's maybe too precious and cute and not really, you know, relevant, you know, not feasible, but I just can't help but think that they, they would probably want some sort of retail down there. So just a thought.
I never heard anybody say that, that they wanted retail down there, although I can remember the discussions and that led up to the commitment to put two commercial buildings in front of each of these apartment complexes down there, the Aspen Green as well as this one. And Mr. Greenberg, as he explained to us, hasn't found anybody seriously interested that he was interested in for the two spots in front of the apartments that he did. So it isn't just the Silverman Group down the road, you know, a mile and a half, same problem. Now, maybe when the 300 units that are pending in the center of Avon are built, the housing units, things will change a little. I don't know, but they've got a lot of retail going in there.
And the numbers, the schools numbers are subject to a lot of interpretation. The there were numbers, I think we had it, Mike, didn't we? Of the number of school kids per apartment is really very, very low compared to compared to
Those numbers are great, but you know, the only thing that's been built are Greenberg's apartments and these apartments and the numbers at Latimer are, you know, very significant.
They also have the ones in Powder Forest, which would add to it.
Yes.
Forgot about Powder Forest. Thank you. Which also has apartments.
Right.
And I'm excited to talk about adding to the grand list, TJ, but I wish they had put this site on the old site so we didn't have to look at it. Right? It's, it's awesome that that was in your pitch, but I wish they had built there first. I get virgin ground is a lot easier to build on than what, what's already been improved, but it would have been nice not to look at this for all these years.
Well, or we, there are many people who feel it's extremely attractive. Some people think it's attractive. We look forward to a forward-looking discussion. And, and all the comments are helpful to us and they all tell us how and what we're going to plan for. I am worried about, I mean, the statistics are out there with respect to the school populations and also with respect to the, to the grand list impact that, that the new apartments in Simsbury have had. And, and for many, many people, it's very positive. Realtors tell me that when, you know, 10 years ago, if somebody came to the Hartford area and was looking for an apartment, they'd look in Glastonbury or West Hartford. They wouldn't even think of Simsbury. And today we got the first come of all the people coming because we had a very new stock of significantly attractive apartments for, for the new folks, so.
Yeah, literally thousands, right? So enough. I mean, every conversation that I've had around that property is why, why, why do we have so many apartments? So I'm elated that they're selling and that people are moving to town. That's awesome. Welcome. You know, it just if I were a betting man, I would have bet against it. So congratulations. I'm excited that it's working out for the Silverman Group. I just, you know, it's hard not to all the conversations as a, as a citizen of Simsbury and all of the folks that know that I'm on the zoning commission. Every conversation, literally every conversation about apartments is more apartments, really? And I have been answering that question going, I think we're saturated personally. But clearly I'm wrong.
Well, we have their interests and we also have the Nelson Group finalizing plans. I don't know, Mikey, if you can comment on that, but they're near, they gotta be near, ready to go with some plans for the site behind, you know, on Iron Horse Boulevard. That was 150 or 170 units down there.
Right.
So.
But you know, that was part of a, you know, a charrette that was done years ago. And it's walkable and you know, there are actually amenities in town that people could actually
Right. Now the kids are going to go to Central and St. Mary's.
Right.
The Hartford was a subject, the Hartford site was a subject of a charrette as well, Mike.
Yeah, yeah, right. I know, I know. And you know, and to your point, the form-based code was something really new and unique and helped us to solve a problem. But you know, I, I just it's just hard to hear about more apartments. I'm sorry. Just because it's all I, it's often all I talk about, you know? When it, when I, whenever the conversation somehow finds its way towards zoning.
Well, the good news on the south side is that the way it rolls, you won't be able to see that from the road.
Right. Which is why I say I wish they built those first, built that side up first.
Got you.
But for the saturation thing, these apartments are still renting. I mean,
And again, right, but you know, are they also going to build on to the, to the Latimer school for all the kids that are going to end up coming out of this? Right? I mean, I hope that
I don't know. We, we need to look at those numbers because the numbers that we saw didn't support a big increase.
But there has been, right? And I get it. It's not all from this project and it may not be a lot of children from this project or the potential future project, but you know, there's going to be some for sure.
Yeah, so not unique to Simsbury, you know, it's, it's a national phenomenon. The culture changes, people getting married later. There are a lot of socio-factors that go into, into the burgeoning apartment in non-owner living spaces and it's, it's, there are people who contribute greatly to our society and to our culture and I, for one, don't want to say we don't want them in Simsbury, that's for sure.
And I'm not saying that, you know, and, and you know, I just a mile from my home, there are all those apartments that are being built in Avon. On my drive to work, I drive by this project. I drive by the Greenberg project at the south end of town. I drive by the Nelson projects. And then the Northern Gateway stuff and the apartments, the grand And then the Northern Gateway stuff and the apartments, the grand in Granby. Um, I just, you know, drive by a lot of apartments all of a sudden, plus all the existing stock that has been here for years.
I, and I, I completely agree with what you're saying, Mike, and I have had this discussion many times as well. Um, anecdotally, as, as Melissa said before, that I have not heard tremendously positive feedback about, um, the existing and the forthcoming apartment inventory in town. And I just would like to add for what it's worth that we still need to address our affordable housing and our inclusive housing. So food for thought.
Yes, the Silvermans have not been interested in that, although Aspen Green has a complement of affordable kind of units. So that's something maybe, uh, you can discuss, TJ.
They'll be interested that you're interested in that.
Yes. I think we're interested in that. The town is interested in that.
It's a significant issue for us, especially if Meadowwoods goes through.
In one of the early projects I was involved in, just anecdotally, and I, I appreciate the discussion. But one of the projects I was involved in very early, I was in so early that they let me listen to and participate in the marketing studies. And in the marketing studies, it turned out that all they were looking for was for people in Sims Ray to say where they'd like to move when they got out of their four-bedroom garrison colonial house. And you know, Sims Ray's rich legacy is the people who come here. It's not, it's not, it's not the people who move around town to retire somewhere else.
And I have friends that have moved out of their homes and into some of those apartments, right? I, I, I'm not saying they don't get used. I get that. And they don't have kids, so they're not burdening the school system, but, uh, uh, or they have kids, but they don't have, you know, grade school kids. So, you know, I, I, I get it. They, 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 they serve a need. Um, I just, I'm just not looking forward to all the conversations.
I mean, I would love, I've got one kid left at home. I think it'd be fantastic to move into a downtown townhouse or an apartment. That would be great. I don't want to take care of my yard anymore. And I think a lot of people think that way as well. But we want to make sure that it doesn't so drastically alter our, what's, we're using word sense of place. Um, that, that Simsbury becomes the place that people actually didn't move to. It's something entirely different now.
I'm very pleased to have the discussion, Mr. Chairman. We'll, we'll be back and we'll be back with some plans. And we'll participate in anything you want to, and we'll look at the affordable as to how we can look at that in the next phase.
Well, I, I thank you. It's, uh, it's getting late. Let's, uh, close this off to be continued.
Thank you all.
Thanks, TJ.
Thanks.
Thank you, TJ.
Thank you.
We've got a update work job on our agenda here. Um, I think we had asked to get some feedback from the E D C and I presume we didn't get that yet.
Actually, we, we received, uh, some comments from E D C. Generally, they supported the changes. They would like to see possibly childcare or summer camps added to a use in the zone. And the other was to consider educational uses, although they noted the implications, the edge of adding educational uses may not result in an increase of the grand list. Because some of the education, education institutions may be considered tax exempt.
Mike, isn't childcare one of those things that the state statute, uh, overrides us on?
In, in this, in the single-family zoning district, it does. The industrial, it does not. It says that if you allow single-family home and it's in-home, less than six kids, we have to treat it just like a single-family home.
Okay. All right. So what do we want to do about our, are we ready for a, a new draft to, uh, have a public hearing?
On the industrial zone, Dave?
Yeah, on these changes.
Yeah, why don't we just finalize a draft and move it forward?
Mike, can you do that for, um, why don't you make us a draft and then we'll set a public hearing at the next meeting?
Sounds good.
Okay. I think we've reached the end of the rope.
Yeah, and, and I'm sorry, guys. I, 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 you know, I get a little passionate about this and, and I got on the zoning commission because Hartford said they were leaving. So, you know, I said, I wanted to be a voice of reason and a yes, uh, when stuff came to town for that property. And here I am going, no, 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 no. So, uh, I, I am, uh, I am at sixes and sixes and nines on this one.
Yep. It's, it's a difficult thing because, uh, we, we hear it from everybody. But I think TJ's right. The facts are of supporting what we did.
Yeah, I get it, you know, and it's their property to do what they want with, as long as it meets, it meets. And I get that, but I just.
They're free to sell it if we're insistent that we're not going to have it developed unless it's retail or manufacturing or something that fits it. We're not going to have any more residential. We could say that. But their insight is telling us that it's going to stay vacant.
Right. And it becomes a taking if we, uh, really, really enforce that. Anyway, can we have a motion to adjourn?
I will make that. Can I make that motion?
Shannon?
I will make the motion to adjourn.
Okay, Shannon got to do it. Mike is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Thanks, guys.
Yeah.
Mike, you still want to talk?
Yeah, hold, hold on. Let me, uh,
Mike Litten, can I ask you a quick question?
Hold on, let me just, uh, stop the, the live. I'm sorry. I'm having a little difficulty with Zoom here. You know what? Unfortunately, it's not letting me shut the live screen off. So let me do this. Um, I'm going to end the meeting. Sign back on the two of you on Zoom invite.
I'll just shoot you an email. I'll shoot you an email. It's not like critical.
Okay.
Yeah, actually, Mike, you can call me tomorrow if you want.
Thank you.